February 16th, 2021 Planet Commission Tech Exchange Committee Meeting. My name is CJ Mann and I'll be chairing today's meeting. We are operating in a virtual environment and will be likely doing so for the foreseeable future. I would like to ask for patience as we use this platform for our public meetings. There may be slight delays as we transition between speakers, presentations, and participants. If any participants have an issue with the technology, please send a message to the moderator, Mr. Keegan McDonald. We are discussing one item today, a follow-up discussion that we talked about at our last meeting in January, TC 1620 floodplain regulations, which will amend the UDO with new restrictions on development within floodplains. Mr. Ben Brown gave a presentation last week and we gave Mr. Brown some directives as to what we can follow up on. So we'd like to hear at this time from Mr. Brown as to those requests that we made in his response to those requests.
Yes, sir. Thank you to the, to the committee for having me back. As we talked about last week or last month, sorry, time has no meaning. Was TC 1620 and had some follow-up info that the committee had asked for from city staff. And I put together a backup memo and with that stuff and with a few of the attachments. And I'll just go through that kind of piece by piece. And if there's any questions, feel free to stop me. There's no formal presentation because really the info is all in the attachments that were part of the backup. So rather than just put those on a PowerPoint to bore everybody. I figure we just go through the attachments and see if that's what you guys needed. First thing we talked about or first thing that was asked for was sort of a floodplain one sheet or cheat sheet kind of showing the different flood zones and what they look like and how they appear on our website based on some of the feedback that we've gotten from, from, from the public. The first sheet of that is the floodplain one sheet for IMAPs. And I picked an area which is Wake Forest and Six Forks, which has not been studied for future floodplain conditions with current maps and showing the delineation between the different flood zones, between the floodway, the 100-year floodplain and the 500-year floodplain. And then up in the northwest side of town, I picked an area near TW Alexander, which is in the Briar Creek watershed, which has been studied for future conditions and kind of labeled that with the 100-year future conditions and 100-year floodplain. And you can see that what we talked about last week, the issue for the city GIS site is that the colors for the 500-year floodplain and the 100-year future floodplain where it's applicable are the same color. And gave a piece of legend there. Now, the definitive source for the future floodplain is the North Carolina Flood Risk Identification System website. Kind of going through the, if you go to that site and enter in the address, they have a GIS site just like, just like the city GIS. And you can see that the difference, they do have a different color for the 500-year floodplain and for the 100-year future floodplain. They have different hatching and that's kind of what I was going through there. Just to kind of show, I will go ahead and share that attachment to make sure we're all on the same page here. But so this is the NC FRIS or Flood Risk Information System website. You can kind of see that their 500-year floodplain is more of a yellow and where the 100-year future conditions is more of a black and gray kind of hatched. But these are the same areas I showed up on the city website with the IMAPs. You can kind of see the color difference there. And then I also pulled out a section of town that's just got the floodplain soils and kind of what that looks like on our city GIS as well as the actual legends for that. Were there any questions regarding the mapping? And as, as part of the backup memo, stormwater staff is currently working with GIS staff to, to put a more present way to find your floodplain status on our website. The, the suggestion was made at the last meeting about having like an address lookup site to kind of do that. And that's, and that's that direction that we're going in kind of from our website. Once we're done with that, I'll be happy to bring that back, that finished product back. So that would even keep you from going to the IMAPs website. You just kind of go to the city website, kind of check on it and probably get linked to the IMAPs website once you find your address. So the next issue is, let's see if I can... Trying to stop sharing here. So for the different properties, can everyone see the spreadsheet with, with the attachment two spreadsheet?
Yes.
Excellent. So this is based on the current FEMA mapping. We looked at three different scenarios with the different percentages that we showed you guys last time. The first one was vacant property that's more than half an acre. And the, the different columns are entirely in the floodplain, between 75 and 100% in the floodplain, between 50, 50% and 75% in the floodplain, and then between 1% and 50% floodplain. So you can kind of break down how these would be effective. And if you go to the, to the far right-hand side for the total properties that are affected and the total acreage, with the way the texting is currently written, for the half acre exemption, it's 400, excuse me, it's, it's 409 properties with about 1,600 total acreage. And if you, if you change the size of the acreage exemption to three quarters an acre, that goes to 352 with about 1,577 total acres. And if you go down and if you go up to one acre to be your exemption cutoff, that, that goes to about 313 or about 1560 acres. So going from half an acre to one acre, you lose about 37 acres of floodplain land and a little less than 100 properties. So just to kind of give you guys what that looks like. And now comparing that to the preliminary FEMA flood maps that are out there showing that. Are you guys seeing that now? The attachment three?
Yep.
Okay, good. So total numbers kind of go down with the preliminary maps. And that goes back to because some of our flood levels in Crabtree Creek are actually going down because of a mapping error from back in the early eighties. So that's finally being fixed with the new preliminary maps. So the total properties affected with the same constraints that we talked about would be 399 properties or, or about 1,546 acres of land. About 343 properties, if you change that cutoff to three quarters of an acre or about 1,528 acres. Or if you move it to an acre cutoff, it goes to about 306 total properties for about 1,511 acres. So as you can see with both the current and the preliminary maps, the majority of the properties are definitely larger than even the largest cutoff that, that is kind of listed here. So the acreages aren't, aren't changing drastically depending on where that cutoff is. And now in attachment four. If you guys can see that now.
Yep.
Kind of wanted a zoning breakdown and a tax value that is of these lands that are in the floodplain. As you can see, the majority here is the R, is the R4 level as far as 21% of the total acreage that's captured. And second, second is actually conservation management, which is not allowed to have anything developed in it now. The only caveat and why I kind of left that in there is because technically you can change conservation management through zoning. So that won't, that could possibly change. But 18.7% of the acreage that's affected by this is conservation management, which is, which is a zoning designation that basically says that you can't develop this area and you're conserving it for natural purposes. The other large acres is in terms of its use, 16%. And with just the acreage that would be in the floodplain on these vacant parcels with that 1,546 acres represents about 67 million in tax value. Now, tax value is, is not the best measure, but it's the best measure we have to kind of get for the value for these properties. And now the other big piece that was asked at the last meeting was a comparison of how Rowley's regulations, both current and proposed, line up with the other, other towns and counties around us. Basically go through the chart here, but all but Town of Windell, Town of Zebulon, and Town, in Town of Roseville. Yes. Excuse me, all but Town of Morseville, Town of Fuquay, and Town of Knightdale are, are, are less strict than Raleigh currently. And everywhere else in Wake County and, and Town and County of Durham and Charlotte McElroy County are more strict than our current regulations. And then with the proposed tech change, that number would get closer to what Wake County's doing and to the other, the other towns in Wake County as well as Charlotte and Durham. So for the, so for the changes in development rights that we talked about last time, the, met, met with Justin and some other planning staff members to talk about that. And we could add language to the infill standards to allow more flexibility for front setbacks on lots, basically like allowing structures to be moved closer to the street when there is a special flood hazard area that limits them on, on the back of their lot. And the other setbacks are already flexible enough to kind of work around that. We're happy to add that in if that's the will of the exchange committee to have that in there. And then comparing a similar buyout mitigation program to Raleigh, probably the, we're the second largest city in North Carolina. So Charlotte was really the person or the city that we compared us to. And in 1999 to present day, they have spent around 67 million on their floodplain buyout program. And they are allotted about $4 million per year in their current budget year. So compare that to Raleigh where we're spent about probably $4 million total since 2006. And budget of this year is going to be dependent on the will of the council as, as far as our rate increase. But if we do not have a stormwater rate increase, then we won't be able to have a, a much of a budget allotted for the floodplain buyout program. Outreach, since our last meeting, the stormwater run survey for the floodplain regulations did close on January 31st. It had been open since the first of December. Overall, we had about 1,000 views of that survey with about 359 people participating. There are also a 143 individual comments that will get a response from staff. Based on the survey results and the percentages, about 60% of the respondents were supportive of those regulations. About 20% were against the proposed regulations and 20% weren't sure. The comments through the official tech change portal, which were, which were open for about two weeks before this came to the planning commission on January 12th, only came back with four separate comments and two, and two of the comments had questions about the tech change and possible impacts and two were supportive of the tech change. Since our last meeting as well, stormwater and planning staff met to kind of talk about some of the issues that we heard last time. And one major issue was the confusion between the FEMA regulated floodplain and the floodplain soils and drains based on study maps. And since all three currently in our ordinance are treated the same as far as they have this, the same kind of restrictions with, with the restriction on 50% of the floodplain can be filled. Staff is recommending that we could change this new ordinance to only affect the FEMA designated floodplain. And so that would make it a little clearer and a little easier to get the information out for these properties that are just in those floodplanes. And also would still keep these, the existing regulations for our floodplain soils and drains based on studies areas that we have today. But they would not be getting any more stricter for vacant properties that are just solely in those areas. It would just be looking at the FEMA mapped areas, which is, which is our biggest impact floodplain and our largest floodplain in Raleigh. So that's something that we could adjust. And also there was discussion of the effective date of the proposed tech change. And staff, staff discussed that as well. And from an ideal standpoint, one, one idea for the effective date would be to tie it to when the preliminary FEMA flood maps go effective. And we've been waiting on that for about five years now from FEMA and the state of North Carolina. And we think that based on everything we've heard from, from state floodplain mapping staff is that they anticipate those being effective by the end of this calendar year. Unfortunately, we don't have anything official as of today saying that that is that date. Obviously, it would cut down any confusion between mapping changes. You'd kind of know what map moving forward that you were dealing with, with any new regulations and that sort of thing. But also there's not a set date. So staff's a little weary of going full pledge on that. So what we thought could be a compromise is the date could be set for the effective date of this potential ordinance change could be set for the same as the map adoption of the preliminary maps or January 1st, 2022, whichever comes first. So if we had a date certain from the state of North Carolina or from FEMA, then I'd feel better about putting a date certain with a FEMA map adoption. But that's kind of why we left it in either or like that. And once again, that's something that if the committee wishes, staff is happy to make that change and we're willing to discuss it more here as well. And I think that's all the updates and I'm sure there's questions. So please don't be shy.
Thanks, Mr. Brown. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Mr. Brown before we open it to the public? Mr. York, I see.
No, I was just, I was gonna ask Ben to pull down his, his screen so we could see each other. That's it. I don't have any questions.
Okay, okay.
I've stopped sharing correctly because I thought I did.
Yes, you did, you did.
I don't think I'm seeing any questions so far. Mr. McDonald, can, I think we have four members from the public willing to speak. Can we open the floor up for the first public participant?
Sure thing. So I believe the first person I have on the list is Suzanne Harris. So just... Okay, Suzanne, you are unmuted.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hope you're doing well. Can you guys, I say, testing my mic, it does, does sound cooler than saying, can you hear me? All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. I appreciate the work that the staff has put in to addressing some of the concerns that were raised in the last meeting. I honestly haven't had as much time to digest it as I would have liked to have, but part of that's on me. I took some time off. So my apologies for not being quite as well-read on all the proposed changes. Some of what I wanted to comment on after listening to the presentation, I would agree with, with the statements that Ben was discussing as far as trying as much as possible to tie the, the changes that the city of Raleigh wants to do with the adoption of the new maps. My only concern on that still revolves around those individuals who are not notified right now, are not aware that their property would be regulated or that the, that there would be changes to the regulations for their property. But they may be captured under the new mapping. I, I know that Ben had indicated that at least in the Crabtree Valley Mall area, in many cases, the, the mapping is actually shrinking as far as the affected areas. But I did have quite an in-depth conversation with Milton Carpenter, I believe is his name, with FEMA a week or so ago about some of these changes. And there are still areas where there will be new, new, newly regulated areas as the maps come out. So I would just be concerned that those individuals, those property owners would somehow need to be made aware of the potential changes to the regulations for the city of Raleigh and how that might affect their property. So I'm not sure the best approach to, to kind of ensure that notification, but I think that's something that should be considered. As far as the, the charts that were posted, which were a little bit small for me to, to see on the screen and, and I was trying not to have separate documents open at the same time so I could try to follow along. But as far as the acreages changing from half acre to maybe three quarters of an acre or one full acre, I would request that you all consider whether or not the benefit to the landowners and to them being included in that exemption for the three-quarter acre or even for the acre. If, if the amount of properties and the amount of acreage perhaps is not seen as, as significant, then perhaps allowing those individuals to fall under the exemption that was currently being proposed for the half acre. Because I know for some, there's the question of how that number was derived at to start with the half acre, whether or not that was arbitrary or there was some science behind that half acre. So I know for those individuals who are at, you know, .6 acres and, and had plans on, on building something there that would be drastically impacted by the changes, I'm sure they would appreciate that allowance if, if you all felt, felt that the change wasn't going to be super impactful to the overall effort that the city is going for. And the other, last thing I'd like to mention for your consideration is the grandfathering in of properties. So obviously if, if the, the date that the, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the words here. If the date for implementation is pushed out to either when the FEMA maps are adopted or January 1st of 2022 or something much further out, I think that lends itself to the ability to make sure that folks are informed and any projects that are in the works or in the discussion stages and money has already been put forward, that those projects can get themselves through and not get caught in the lurch. I'm just concerned about any projects that might already be in the works. And if something were to suddenly be approved in a shorter time period, that those projects, if they did not yet have their building permits, they might be caught in the middle. So that would be another area I would ask for you all to consider while you're discussing this tech change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. The city staff or Mr. Brown, do you have any comments to her concerns about informing the public or grandfathering or the grandfathering process of properties or any other comments that she, she might have made?
I think with the grandfathering of properties, that's, that's why staff was looking at that longer lead time for effective date. That was, so I think we're on the same page with that. I mean, there obviously could be other changes too if you wanted. But from, from a mapping standpoint, the effect at the same time as the FEMA preliminary maps doesn't make sense. Normally, with the, with the effective date for a normal tech change was that this would be effective at, at time of application of permit. So if there's anything else that the committee would want to factor in to that, that's something that staff can definitely add in, that sort of thing. But usually it's, it's taking an application of permits. So once that effective date goes, if you apply for the permit prior to that effective date, then that's where that grandfather would run itself. If there's something more robust that would need to be added, I don't, I'm thinking for the community to make any recommendations. As far as the notice, we did, we did send out a paper notice and also electronic notice to everyone that's in the FEMA floodplain. I will need to check with our mapping staff to see if we sent that to the preliminary map folks as well. I'm not sure if that happened, but as Suzanne mentioned, in the Crabtree Creek Basin, that floodplain is actually shrinking to that mapping area from the areas that I was talking about. And so it would be primarily in the Walnut Creek drains basin. That we would need to double check that because there were similar properties that came into the floodplain with the floodback maps in that drainage basin, which usually happens when you have a mapping disorder.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Keegan, can you please present the second speaker?
Yes, so the second speaker we have on the list is Ed Moore. Mr. Moore, you are unmuted now.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate it. First, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. As he mentioned, my name is Ed Moore. I live on 3622 Bellevue Road here in Raleigh and I own a piece of property that is partially in the pro fringe on, at 114 West Jury Lane. I'm opposed to the tech change 1620, specifically the section 937A1A, which is the half acre exemption. And then the 937A1B, which is for developed lots. And I really appreciate Ben Brown's new figures and what he put up. And Ben, thank you for going to that extra effort and showing that and showing the difference as to what would happen if you changed that from one-half acre to three-quarter acre. Since I've got a .67 acre, as Ms. Harris was relating to, it would be a big change in affecting my property, but it would only change to the city, a minor amount of land itself. And I think you had... And I think you had the numbers there that show the amount of uh acreage that would be impacted. As to the existing lots that are undeveloped, whether it's grandfathered or brought in as an exception, I think, I mean, an exemption uh either way would work fine to be able to do that. But I purchased the property back in oh-three to be able to uh to build on it. And under the existing regulations at that point, uh everything was fine. But the um, the changes now that are proposed would almost preclude me from being able to build my home on that property, which is a tremendous financial impact on the values. And like you say, the buyout program is possibly there, but it depends on the, the funds and the economics that the city has to be able to make those buyouts. Uh but it would be too much of a devastating impact on me to be able to uh, to not be included in that exemption. The other thing that I had a question on, Ben, that you might address is the difference between the hundred-year floodplain and flood fringe that the city council directed back in oh, two thousand and eighteen, when they said to do this investigation, uh that and the future conditions. Because uh back when the council addressed that, they only addressed the one-hundred-year floodplain and the flood, the flood fringe. They did not address the future conditions area. And on the maps, if that is the area that's in purple, or as you indicated on your new maps, the black and blue uh checkered areas, that's quite a bit of an extension that would totally eliminate the area of buildability on my lot. And uh if you would clarify the difference as to why that was extended from the hundred-year floodplain to include the future conditions area, and if that's the area shown in purple on the FEMA maps. Okay, that concludes my comments. If you would comment on that, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, for your comments. Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir. So with the future in uh two thousand and six, when the uh state mapped part of the city for future floodplain conditions, uh we were instructed to um uh basically have regulations that were, that were the same as the floodway fringe area or the hundred-year floodplain. It's some people have um come like to call it, even myself. But, but the future area is based on essentially uh current zoning for like the watershed. Whereas the regular um hundred-year floodplain area is based on what's on the ground today. So that's kind of what the future floodplain is based on. The elevation-wise doesn't, doesn't change so substantially, but it, but uh Mr. Moore is right that, that the horizontal floodplain would get wider with the future floodplain. But I will say that um where areas of the city are mapped today for future floodplain, we are enforcing the same as the hundred-year floodplain today. Now, the, the only caveat to that is only about twenty to twenty-five percent of the city is mapped for future floodplain. Like that one area I showed in the Bright Creek watershed is one of the main areas up in the northwest side of town. It's mapped for future floodplain, but like Crabtree Creek and the main branch of Walnut Creek are currently not mapped for future floodplains, but would be mapped for future floodplain with the new preliminary maps when they were to go effective. Because with the new preliminary maps, they would be, the city would be a hundred percent mapped for the future floodplain area.
Commissioner Miller?
Hi, yes, could you just clarify? Um when we're looking at some of these maps, is the five-hundred-year floodplain um, the purple color for the five-hundred-year floodplain and the future condition and the one-hundred-year future conditions, is that um Raleigh's map or FEMA's map?
That's Raleigh's map. So that said, um that's the uh map that I labeled for uh iMap. So that's Raleigh's uh map and GIS staff kind of created those later layers with Wake County. And unfortunately, back in two thousand and six, they created the five-hundred-year and the future floodplain with the same uh layering coloring. Now, we're looking uh almost uh much quicker to kind of see if uh City GIS and Wake County GIS staff can change that coloring even before the new maps are adopted, but I haven't got any confirmation of that uh from their staff as of yet. Because that is causing confusion and it, and it is, and it is a confusing topic. Like Mr. Moore's property, his area is not mapped for future floodplains with the current floodplain map. So the purple area on his map uh is five-hundred-year floodplain, and we would not be enforcing it on uh his property today or even after when this um ordinance went effective. But for the future conditions mapping on the preliminary maps, that's what he would need to look at on, on uh his property as well.
Thank you.
Mr. McDonald, can you please present the third speaker?
Certainly. So the next person we have signed up to speak is Isabel Maddox. Isabel, you are unmuted.
Thank you, and good afternoon to the members of the committee. Uh thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'm here representing three family uh entities, Worthy Holdings LLC, Worthy Enterprise LLC, and Isabel C. Worthy. Uh and I have several questions. I mean, I, I appreciate Ben's um efforts to clarify a, a very murky thing on this future floodplain and future flood areas and five-hundred-year floodplain. But I would encourage, and I don't know that the text change itself language has been amended, but that language, when you look at that language and you look at GIS, you, you come away with the unmistakable conclusion that the purple areas on GIS i, i equals the future flood area. So I would encourage just really looking at the language to make sure it works. The other thing, one other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, I've not yet seen data that says, one, there is a problem. Or two, that if the, this text change is imposed and these restrictions are imposed on property owners, that that will remedy any problem that does exist. And then, you know, if, if, yes, there is a problem, and two, this will, will remedy it or partially remedy it, is it fair that a small number of property owners who have undeveloped property in the floodplain areas should bear the, the weight for the whole city? Um my, my family, the three properties, they're all along Brentwood Road. We're looking at potentially a two or three million dollar hit if this text change is imposed before we're able to, you know, submit a site plan. Um and that's, you know, significant, you know, familial hit um for our family. And it just doesn't seem fair that, that, that the whole city's problems should be borne on the backs of a few property owners. And so that brings us to the question of some sort of city buyout. Uh and I'm not talking about, you know, for the most part, these properties aren't a hundred percent unusable, although one of them is, is very close to it. I think we need to talk more and hear more about what, what would a city buyout problem look like? And would it, would it be effective only for the properties that are rendered, you know, useless because of this text change? Or would it be that they would buy out that portion of a property that was rendered useless? I think that's something that should be seriously, seriously considered. Um I did, I liked what Ben had to say about the effective date, pushing that out a little bit, because it, I think it will add a lot of clarity when we get these FEMA maps adopted. And if we can, we can tie those effective dates together, that would, one, I think, make it a lot clearer. And two, it would give some property owners who are, have, have plans underway. They might not have submitted a site plan yet, but they might have invested a hundred thousand dollars towards that goal. And it certainly would help them, you know, finish up that planning and get something in so they could, they can take advantage of any grandfathering that would exist. And the, the final point I would make is, um has there been consideration of the ripple effect? And going ahead and amending at the same time, other parts of the UDO that, that might be affected with this change? The easiest one that comes to mind is the, the um frontage um requirement. And that would need a change that would be um, you coordinate with this change so that if you have not only um floodway, but any floodplain on your property, you should be excused from compliance with a frontage requirement, you know, requiring you to bring your building up within a certain number of feet of your, of the street, because you would not be able to put any building in that area. So I do think that um otherwise, you got, you got a bunch of variances you're going to have to get, which you could probably get, but it requires a process and two or three-month delay and thousands, several thousand dollars of, of fees to get that done. Um and it would be nice to have, you know, a, a comprehensive look at the UDO in terms of ripple effects. So those are my comments, but I would be interested in data supporting this. Because if there's not really data backing this up, I don't, I don't know why we're doing it. Um and, and I don't doubt that there is, but I'd like to see it. So thank you very much, and uh again, appreciate the uh, the committee taking the time to thoroughly vet this matter.
Thanks, Ms. Maddox. Uh Mr. Brown, do you have any comments to what Ms. Maddox had said?
As far as um some of the data, it's um, I think I would clarify is that it's uh really not looking to um fix any current problems we have. We're looking to not make the problem any worse that we're currently having with flooding in all our urbanized areas around streams.
But how do you know that this will do that?
Because we'll be, we, we won't be squeezing the floodplain down in these vacant parcels where uh, where the floodplain is allowed to flow freely today.
So you're basically using, you know, you would be using, say, my property to sort of subsidize the effects of Crabtree Valley Mall or some heavily developed area?
Not really subsidize the effects, just not, just not make our, our flooding problem any worse with the city. So I mean, we're not really using your property to counteract what's happening at Crabtree Valley Mall, because that's still going to be a problem. Crabtree Valley Mall is still going to flood, like when it rains hard after this ordinance passes. But just not put any more structures or people and property into the floodplain area that aren't there already.
And Ben, I uh, I certainly feel and uh hear and understand Ms. Maddox and other uh public members uh sentiment about not being able to develop on their land and lose the property value. Can you explain or can uh we get some data on the buyout prod, uh program with the city as far as development and floodplains? Or where, where can we find it? Or where uh can we talk to that? Maybe not this meeting, but have another meeting where we talk about that, that process?
Yeah, I mean, that's uh definitely something, something that staff can pull uh more information on, but it would be a ranking program, because we wouldn't get an influx of funds for the entire properties affected, like on year one. I know someone's not muted, but sorry about that, if you can't hear me. So uh there, there, there would be a priority ranking system put in place. And uh like it's in, like Ms. Maddox said, I mean, it would be purchasing the property that's impacted by the floodplain. So if you had fifty percent of your property impacted by, theoretically, we would go in and kind of carve out the floodplain area out of that property and then buy out that portion and not buy the entire property that could be developed on there. So that's definitely something that we can bring back, kind of like a plan of attack for and kind of what our, what our funding constraints are with that. And to uh Ms. Maddox's other point about the setbacks, that was um the uh part of the backup about the uh changing that portion of code that would allow more flexibility with that uh front setback that she mentions. If there's any other potential for changes, um I know when uh planning staff and some more staff met to talk about it, that was the major one that, that would need some added flexibility. If there's any other changes, um I'm, I'm uh happy to hear from the planning department or from maybe the attorney's office. Is there anything else that could be added for, for uh flexibility? But that was the, the reason for the, the front setback kind of flexibility into the infill retirement requirements.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller, I think I saw your hand go up.
I, I can wait until the end of the public comment.
Okay, okay. Um yeah, it will, at, at the end of the meeting, I'll, I'll revisit um creating a framework or going over the framework for the buyback program, because I, I definitely like to see that or talk about that uh probably in a future meet. Mr. McDonald, can you uh bring on the fourth and last speaker?
Certainly. The last person I have signed up to speak is Richard Brown. And just bear with me one moment. Richard, uh you are unmuted.
Hi, Keegan. Uh can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that, and thank you uh to the committee for uh the time this afternoon and probably join the crowd in thanking uh Ben for he and his staff's work on uh this, this text change matter and certainly understand the uh significance of it, the importance of it. I would just uh, I'm with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. We represent a, a multitude of property owners, developers, um applicants who, who had, who share some of the same issues and impacts uh from these, this, the, the proposed text change language, as has been mentioned before um by the other three speakers. So ju- just really building maybe on, on those comments and, and certainly support those uh comments and viewpoints as well. But um I, I, I think I would like to just add on um one, one specific one specific notion of the tech, the text change that affects properties that are um otherwise currently vested or have vested rights under previous approvals. I, I have admittedly, I've followed this text change from a little bit more of a distance until recently uh spending some time with Ben, talking through some of the uh application of text change, some of the interpretations, and um please do correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but I understand through those com- recent conversations that even properties that have, are vested under current uh subdivision or ASR approvals are still subject to uh the outcome of this text change. So I think when it comes to those uh properties that may believe they're vested and have rights to develop, particularly with fifty percent of the floodplain um that can be filled and then built upon, if those, if those um provisions were necessary to achieve uh the, the development program that they had anticipated when they purchased the property, um those would be at risk or at stake as a part of this text change. So I, I do uh just sort of circling back on one of Ben and staff's um updates on the front end here. I do support um the, the staff's suggestion of adjusting the language that would limit the application of the text change to FEMA floodplanes only. Uh and uh, and also the effective date uh of the application of it certainly would make more, more sense and provide more due process. But I, I do think there is a uh, a, a logic to having those groups of properties who, and we, and we represent a, a number of, of property owners that fall under multiple, multiple of these categories. But um where there is an approved subdivision, I think it would certainly make a lot of sense to me and hopefully could be room for some agreement to add those properties that are under vested rights currently. Add those to the list of exemptions under nine point three seven A uh by, by simply inserting perhaps a uh another line item that exempts properties uh that have vested rights under a, as part of an approved or an active subdivision or administrative uh site plan. So um I don't know if that's been considered uh in previous discussions with this committee or at the um, uh at the staff and committee level, but I sure would think that would make sense. at the staff and committee level, but I sure would think that would make sense and would request that that is also a part of the consideration to be added, you know, perhaps as a, a line item C under, under that section 9.3.7 before it gets back to the full commission. And again, thanks for your time here. Thanks for, I'm glad to ask, answer any specific questions. But look forward to the outcome and the, the opportunity to, to influence this in a positive way.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And I, I don't remember talking about vested rights, but Mr. Brown, do you, I mean, yeah, Mr. Brown, do you have any comments towards the other Mr. Brown's comments?
Yeah, just me and Richard thought about this all over the Christmas holiday. No, no relation between Richard Brown and me. But as far as vested right goes, I would probably have to defer to David kind of, kind of with our history as far as how that goes. I mean, because normally, like I said earlier, the kind of vested rights would be the permit application, but I'm not sure if something could be crafted to go to expand that to other city processes. That sort of other factors.
We can create more, you know, exceptions to carve out the, what is vested and what isn't vested is sort of a case by case scenario. There's statutory fact scenarios that, that give you vesting at various stages of your development. So I don't think we would add specific language for vesting because the, the vested rights statute sort of covers that anyway. I think if there's additional exceptions that we would want to add in, I think that's a, that's a different issue. 160D 108 talks a lot about, you know, who has vested rights and permit choice and so forth. Permit choices in chapter 143, but they're linked together.
So, um, and this has been, is it possible to, to tie that to like a subdivision or to a preliminary approval though? Certain about.
Well, we have, we have, the city has adopted text changes and, and ordinances that exempt lots created before a certain day. I mean, and that's basically what you would be talking about is exempting lots of a subdivision that was recorded on a before a certain date. But I think, and Justin can jump in, I think what has happened though is if, if one of those lots is recombined or further subdivided, it loses that exemption. I think that's how, how we have applied that rule in the past.
That's correct. As I understood the, the question was really seemed to be a permit choice question where Mr. Brown was asking if he had a, an application for a subdivision or site plan submitted for review prior to the effective date of this text change. Then those applications would not be subject to this, to these rules as I understand it.
Yeah. In addition to that, if I'm, if I'm still open here, Justin, the, the same, the same suggestion would apply to previously approved subdivisions that are still active and within that, within that sunset period.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to defer to David on the specifics of the permit choice law, but that's my understanding. As long as your application is still active and alive, you get to choose the the regulations which were in effect when you submitted the application.
The, yeah, the, the vested rights statute 160D 108 sets out the process by which you can establish, the property owner can establish that they have vested rights. And so I, it would be inappropriate for me to listen to a fact scenario and try to just make that determination off the cuff. And so, but there, there is a process to establish your vested rights in, in 160D.
And the other Mr. Brown has sent me some languages this afternoon and staff is happy to get with city attorney's office and go over that and bring something back to the committee at later date.
Thank you, Ben. Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Mann. So maybe I'm confused, but I just is what I'm hearing that policy, the way that it's written now would not allow a active subdivision or an approved A S R to be regulated by the current requirements. I just made that assumption that that would be the case. Like I, I can't even imagine that there would be anything otherwise. So am I hearing that that is not true? Is that, is that right?
And I think, maybe, well, and it may depend on the definition of active, like is active approved and never built or is active in like review right now? I think that's kind of where some of Justin and I were talking about, but I'm not sure if that's, if I'm correct, and I'll defer to Justin on that.
Yeah, I got you. I did hear the other Mr. Brown Ben say, you know, whether it's an application versus an approval, which I understand there might be some, some issues there, but I would think that any, any permit that has not sunset, I just, I couldn't even imagine that it wouldn't be under the current regulation. So if I've misunderstood that, I need to understand because I would agree with that 100%, but I just assumed that that was covered.
I, I think it is. I think what, what we're hearing is that what active is, is a case by case determination, but if, if it is deemed active, then you have the ability to be regulated under the rules that were in effect at which time you submitted the application.
Got you. Okay. And Chairman, if I could, I've got a couple of other questions while you give me the floor, if you're okay with that. Right. Ben, I would, I would like to understand because I, I did have some concerns about this sort of half acre and Mr. Moore's comment about him at point six, seven. And so I, I do appreciate all the, the work that you've pulled together and, and provided this information that we requested. If I understand, which surely I don't, I'm not good at math. Let me just start by saying that. So, but if I look at attachment two, which is current FEMA flood maps, which is not the new remapping that we're going through that about 20% of the area has been remapped. And I compare that to attachment three, which are the preliminary FEMA flood map. So that's the information from the new mapping that we've received and you're sort of looking forward. When I just go to attachment two, which is current, and I look at, at more than half acre and I go all the way to the right, the total acreage is 1596.6. So let's just call it 1596. When I go to attachment three and I go to that same category, I'm at 1545, which is about 50 acres less. And I would have assumed, and, and that's consistent among your three categories there. 51 acres, 50 acres and 49 acres less between those three different categories. I might have incorrectly assumed that I would have expected those acreages to go up under the preliminary findings, but I heard you say that some of the mapping that was done back in the day wasn't accurate and I get that technology was different. So am I reading that correctly that with the preliminary findings or anticipating that the, the affected acreage is going to go down? Cause I was surprised by that.
Yes, that is correct. And I'm not old enough to say it's never happened this way, but I've heard enough people say that when you do a remapping like this, it hard, it hardly ever goes down. But the mapping area, era, error from the 1980s was that when, when Crabtree Creek was mapped for floodplain, it was back then, Amstead Forest still had the possibility of not being a part. It still could have been developed. And so that's how it was kind of keyed in. So the correction goes to the fact that Amstead forest was keyed into the watershed as a protected park and so protected open space. And so that's why the, the Crabtree Creek Basin did have flood levels go down. Like Crabtree Valley Mall still shows it's flooding and that sort of thing, but it's definitely less flooding with the preliminary maps than it's showing with the current map. So that's why that acreage goes down. But you are correct, Brian. Usually when you do a map update like this, more properties get brought in because you've got better data. And usually better data translates to expanding the floodplain just because you're getting more detail. But this is a rare case where it actually went down.
Okay. Well, and then along those lines, again, being sensitive and, you know, miss, I understand Ms. Maddox's questions, but generally I feel like we're all trying to be environmental stewards here, but my concern is those, those property rights. CJ man has brought, I mean, Commissioner man has brought it up and others and, and a little bit concerned about that. But I'm looking at what you have one in, in your third category, you say not developed and more than one acre of private properties, your third category. Or I'm looking at on attachment three and just going to preliminary. Yep. What does more than one acre mean? Does, does that, is that supposed to be 0.9 acres or 0.99 acres maybe?
Yeah, it's, it's basically 1.01 acres and up essentially.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
I figured that's what you meant, but if I do my math and again, somebody, somebody call me out on this, I'm fine. If I, if I look at, at, at the half acre, the difference between half acre and one acre, we're talking a total of 34 additional acres to be affected. Now, I understand that 34, when you talk about acres, that's a fairly sizable area, but I, I'd be curious to compare that to the total acreage that we're looking at in the flood, in the, in the basin. Uh, but if I even just go to the three quarter acre, which might be a little bit more amenable to some of the homeowners, we're talking about 18 acres, which again seems to me, I don't know. You tell me if that, if that is a relatively small number, again, understanding that we need to take care of our floodplains and flooding, et cetera. But how does that compare to sort of what we're looking at total acreage wise?
No, I mean, I, I, I think the trend shows that the majority of the vacant property that's in the FEMA floodplain, either the current mapping or the preliminary mapping is larger tracks, is larger than these half acre, three quarter acre, one acre track. So I think that's really what that trend shows is you're talking about larger tracks of land, not just these smaller tracks. And if you'll notice too, going from left to right on the, either one of the attachments, the numbers of properties that are completely inundated look at the floodplain is far less than the number of properties that are between 1% and 50%. So I mean, you've got kind of areas there that kind of show like a shift as, as kind of that percentage of floodplain goes down, the number of properties and acreage kind of goes up too as well. So I mean, that's, I mean, that's kind of what this trends show. I mean, I, I, the difference between, like you said, 34 acres. I mean, that's definitely a difference. And that's 34 acres of floodplain that could, that could or could not be developed, but compared to the 1500, I mean, that's something to compare to and make that call.
Okay. Thanks, Ben. And I, I get, I just wanted to check myself there to be honest with you. I definitely like the effective date change that you've made. I'm wondering if, if what I think I heard Ms. Harris say, excuse me, about, about being notified, I, I guess if I put myself in a homeowner's shoes and I'm, I'm under the, the purple, pink and, and, and yellow mapping of G I S and not the blue and yellow from FEMA. And you still say, great, we're going to give you either till January 1st, 2021, or I guess that's 2022 now. Or when the new FEMA maps are here, that's still, that's still putting me in a situation where how do I get notified beforehand if my, if, if the impacts of my property are going to either increase or decrease because I can't wait till the law becomes effective to make some decisions about how I want to deal with my property. And so it seemed, I think that's what I heard Ms. Harris saying, and I totally get that. Like I, I like that you're trying to better align to effective date, but I, I still see a concern if I were a homeowner that owned property. And all of a sudden on January 1, it's like, oh, you either have more or less restrictions. You're still kind of backed up into a corner there. And so I just, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that.
Yeah. So as we talked about a little bit this meeting and a lot more last meeting, the outreach we did was pretty much physical mailings and electronic mailings to everyone that's in the floodplain and then, and then, and then especially those vacant properties kind of got notified twice, like about this upcoming text change. So going forward, we would, we would do that same path for this text change, but it also should be noted that any map update, when that does have a solid date on it for that preliminary mapping, regardless of this text change, we will also notify all those people affected as well, that this map is changing and what the effective date would turn out to be. So, I mean, and if there's any more outreach staff is happy to do it as well too. So if there's any other ideas that the commission has, I mean, we're, we're, we're open, open to doing it, but we have had good success as far as getting out to the physical mailings. I mean, you would think the electronic mailings would be a better way to go, but the physical mailings have actually been better this time, especially with the vacant properties as far as getting those notices out and to the people they should. So.
Gotcha. Sorry, I've, I've got a couple more here. So sorry to drone on. Can you confirm that the flood prone soil is just going to be the, the hundred year floodplain, correct? That's what the new, that's what your new text is going to cover, correct?
So currently right now, the flood prone soils layer under our current regulations are regulated the same as the FEMA layers. You can, you, you can fill up to 50%. And the way the proposed text change currently reads, it would be the same as the FEMA layer. But if the commission wishes, staff is open to changing that to just be effective to the FEMA layers as far as that provision on any new filler structures in those vacant properties.
Well, so on your attachment one, where you show us very clearly the 500, 100 approachment floodway. And then, you know, the next exhibit shows very clearly the color of the hundred year future and it's the same close to 500. So that's confusing. But then your third exhibit just shows flood prone soils. And, and what I might be led to believe from that is that is completely outside of a FEMA floodway area. And the, the FEMA floodway could be located, whatever upstream from here. Is that an accurate assumption in looking at this?
It would be downstream, but yes, this is completely separate from the FEMA area. Yeah. So, so like essentially just, just, just to get into a little bit of numbers because I know you like that, right? Is as far as the FEMA area stops, it kind of drains areas of one square mile. And so anything that drains less than one square mile, that's, that's where that FEMA layer stops. So, so like the flood prone soils layer kind of covers us areas that drain less than one square mile and to 100 acres.
Right. That's helpful. Thank you. I think that's it right now, Commissioner Mann, but I may have others if the conversation continues.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Miller, I know you've been waiting.
Thank you. And Commissioner O'Haver covered a lot of this. I wanted to thank Mr. Brown and, and Mr. Rametta and the rest of the staff for working on this. I am similar to Commissioner O'Haver and, and Mann and others, certainly through the benefit of trying to protect our environment and be generally adding additional flood protection and trying to maintain the water quality and, and protect the environment and quality of life in these green spaces. So I, I certainly appreciate the goal of this. And since there is pushback, this staff's extra work on identifying what some of the other municipalities are doing and what some of the impacts of this would be. So, so thank you. I know this, this is a ton of work and it's incredibly helpful and boiled down succinctly. So thank you for that. Um, so so thank you. I know this this is a ton of work and it's incredibly helpful and and boiled down succinctly. So thank you for that. Um, to tick through some of the items that we have already discussed. Number one, the the grandfathering in issue, it looks sounds like there's some open question. Um, so I was going to see for our next meeting if we could have a new detailed explanation of how the grandfathering. Rules apply to projects at various stages of development. Uh, just to make sure that we're clear on that. And the now said questions, um, if if. That could also include an explanation of um. How the new regulations would limit, place limits on existing, any renovations. Or changes in use to existing developments in this area. Um, after the regulations are in place. And then also what would happen if. Development grandfathered in development that's in this area is later destroyed. Um, what would be the, how would the grandfathering in rules impact those properties? In terms of the effective date. It sounds like one question keeps coming up is what happens to properties that were that are not included in the projected floodplanes, but then. Subsequently are newly included in the new FEMA map. Um, going to suggest maybe we could create some kind of a different. Um, process or effective date, notice and effective date for those new properties that newly become subject. So that they have new notice and some additional time to figure out. What to do with their property. Do any other commissioners have ideas on on how much additional time? Well, let me ask first from a legal standpoint, um, would we be allowed to? Have the regulations applied differently to those properties? Any issue with that?
Are you asking, can you have a different effective date for a different property? Is that what you're asking? I'd have to look into that because to me, I mean, there's a. It would depend on how you're divvying up who it applies to and who it doesn't. I mean, uh. Normally laws take effect at the same time for everyone who's subject to the law. And so to have the law apply to one person and not another person. Uh, I think you have some equal protection issues there, so I I would have to dig into that since you're talking about. I'm not quite sure how you would divvy up the properties. I mean, as far as what we were saying earlier, the the permit choice issue, and I was talking more about vested rights, the permit choice issue. Where I read one forty three, seven fifty five is that any change in. The rules while you have a pending quote active. Uh, application, the applicant has the choice as to which version of the rules to follow. And to have applied to their project. And that would include floodplain regulations. I mean, the statute specifically calls out floodplain regulations as something that's subject to permit choice. And so um. As far as active things, you know, permit applications under review for development, that wouldn't apply to a rezoning application. Because that's legislated, but for a development application. It would need to be a a development application that's subject to implementation of these rules. And then if the rules changed while that application was pending. Then the applicant has the right to choose which version of the rule they want to have applied to their project. Um, I was. I was thinking that Richard was talking about. I thought he had mentioned established subdivisions and so forth, and that's why I was going down the vested rights. Discussion, but it's it's two types of grandfathering. Which is a broad term that's not really a legal term, but anyway, you you have protection. If you have a an active application under permit choice. Um, and you have protection under vested rights. If if it's a situation where a permit has been issued and. So you have permit choice before the permits issued permit. Vested rights after the permits issued, if that makes sense. And so and it depends on what the permit was and what reliance was made on it and so forth. To achieve your vested rights. And the statute, that's why I was referring folks to the statute, because the statute sets forth how you establish your vested rights.
Very, well, thank you. Yeah, yeah, that's very helpful. Um, and in terms of the effective date, if if that. A little flag went off in my head too. There might be some kind of equal protection issue there for not applying those law the same way to all properties, but. Um, so if there is not an option to um. Just but but at the same time, I do think that the properties that are um suddenly become. Subject to the new FEMA maps and did not have notice of that, um, that that is an issue that that it would be good for us to address. So if it's possible to address it by giving them a new notice period and effective date, that might be one route. Maybe another one. Might be to make the effective date for all of these. Um, for the new regulation as applied to everyone, um, become effective at some date after the new FEMA maps. Are adopted. Um, and I would defer to some of the more. Some of the practitioners on how long that should be a couple months, um, so that that way. All of the, everybody that is now, once the new maps come out, that then new notice could go out and there could be a new effective date shortly thereafter.
So as far as notice about the new uh FEMA maps, um, there is a, there's a fairly like robust and. Multi governmental layered process as far as notifying the um people, people that will now be part of the floodplain that weren't part of the floodplain. Before the preliminary map, so and that's something legally that that the city is going to have to undertake. As part of that new map adoption process, regardless of how this text change turns out. So um obviously we could um enhance that notice to kind of talk about this text change if it's still. Has some life at that time. And so that's something that that we can definitely do, but all these properties will have to be noticed. That their um property is 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 now going to be in the FEMA floodplain if it wasn't before. And even that the levels are changing on their property, they have to be noticed as well, and that's a federal requirement. So. So that notice will be happening and that's kind of one of the. That's one of the things that state floodplain mapping and the city are kind of waiting on to get the go ahead from FEMA to. Kind of start noticing those people and say, hey, this is your effective date for these maps. Make sure you check it out. Make sure you don't have any. Uh, appeals or anything like that. So that's a whole process we have to go through. That's why that 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 date is usually set out. Months in advance, and so I would love to have that date. In my hip pocket now to kind of tell everybody, but that's kind of what we're waiting on to kind of start that appeal period for property owners if there is an issue with that. With these mapping and that's different from the text change, but obviously we could definitely incorporate more text change language into that notice as well.
Sure, just so that the folks that are newly captured um could get the same type of notice that the ones that were previously captured also got with respect to this. Impact on their ability to develop. Um, what about?
Yeah, sorry, sorry, go ahead, sorry. Um, so so the other uh about changes of use or renovations of developed property. Developed property under this tech change would be subject to our current regulation, the fifty percent fill restriction. So no matter if there was a a catastrophic tear down or something like that, they would still be covered by fifty percent fill. And they would not now become vacant property and fall into this ordinance, if that makes sense.
That was an issue that I saw that came up in some of the public comments, so um. I just saw a lot of these same questions about grandfathering and we're sort of coming up regularly, so it I think I understand them now, but having those. Um, available when we when we meet next might be helpful to the public interested as well as well. Um, so maybe then with respect to the effective date, making. Um, the effective date at some point after the new FEMA maps. Um, come out and get decided because I imagine even if people are on notice that their property might be subject to the new FEMA map. Um, they might contest that and a final determination might not come out until the final maps are published or or right around then. Um, so even though they might have noticed that they might be, they might not know for sure, go closer, I would imagine. So maybe making the effective date some period after the new maps come out. And I'm curious what the other commissioners think about that as well.
Oh, I was waiting to see. Yeah, no, I was waiting to see if you were finished. I was gonna comment. I I I agree with that as well.
I think it's a little bit to what I was getting at, um, planning up. I do, I do understand where Ben's coming from. I mean, they've been saying that these maps are going to be out for five years. And so there's no guarantee for him that just because of San Francisco. So it's just an issue he's trying to tackle, so I get that. But I like what you said, and I'm wondering if Mr. York. Well, maybe it's something you talk about a lot next time. Is there a way to extend that effective date so that everyone is quote unquote notified equally? If someone doesn't get a notification that they're now captured uh till the eleventh hour. Then I, you know, that's not, that's not sort of, that doesn't seem like equal protection either. So I like Mr. Miller's, I think. What I understood her to say was that is there a way to treat everyone equally? And that the effective date is after a certain time that you're notified that you're now captured. To me, that's. I don't know, but certainly a concern that I have.
Thanks, Commissioner O'Haver. I think um in addition, are you, Mr. Commissioner Miller, are you finished or do you have anything else?
Um, I have a, I have three or four. I'll just tick through more quickly. Um, one of them is with respect to the lot size, um, I'm supportive of the issue that Mr. Brown highlighted. And um, Mr. Haver spoke about as well, so I would be in support of extending that exemption to cover lots. Up to one acre. Given the small change that makes to the overall amount of land that's protected versus the number of individual. Small property owners um that would be impacted. Is that something that you'd like to see as well, Commissioner Man? Or you have thoughts on that one?
Yes, yes, I'd like to see some more information about that uh at the next possible meeting, yes.
Okay, um, and then. The last one is the multi jurisdictional chart that um, oh, I'm sorry, the the buyout program as well. Um, I'm I'm very sensitive to Ms. Maddox's comments here. I know that um. I I sort of think about it like a jar full of water, it's a jar half full of water and everybody that's put their rocks in and at the very end. There's like four or five people left holding some rocks and they're the ones that that don't get to put their rocks in basically and have to pay for everything. So I'm I'm very sensitive to that um issue with the sort of folks late to the game having to bear the cost of this. So in, so I'm very interested in the buyout program uh and how Charlotte's works. And how ours, but more importantly, how ours might work. And it's um, I wanted to see if it. There's any way it would be possible to go ahead and. Create as part of this text change that the outline of that buyout program, even if it's not funded today. If that would be within scope of what we could look at here. Guess it's more of a question for you to ask.
Yeah, but Commissioner Miller, I I definitely agree with that. And I think Ben, what you said was since nineteen ninety nine, Charlotte has spent over forty million dollars in buyouts. In Raleigh since two thousand and four has been about four million dollars. And I I just, I know we're a smaller city, but I don't know if we're that much smaller uh than Charlotte. So where we can't, while while we can't be comparable um on a program, uh a buyout program. Uh, like Charlotte, I would, it's alarming to me that we were ten times smaller as far as. The money that we've spent by outs since a comparative time. So that that was, yeah, my comment.
Man, I'm not splitting hairs here, but I want I want Mr. Brown to confirm, I wrote down sixty seven million since nineteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I I did have, I had sixty million. It looks like a four, my hand lines too.
I didn't want to make it worse, but that's fine. But yeah, it was sixty seven million. It's nineteen ninety nine.
So would the buyback program for Raleigh just be additional funding for the existing buyout program or would it be expanding or changing? Or creating a new one?
Um, it would be a different one, I guess. I wouldn't say to say new because how the buyout program has worked in the past for us and. And for most cities and towns is uh that they take a look at kind of structures that are impacted by flooding. And then they um make an effort to remove the structures from the floodplain. And usually those numbers are based on flood insurance claims. So this would be a little bit different because we're buying effectively open space and we're preserving open space, which is definitely durable and has. Cost benefits, but it's just not as not as easy to point to as like an insurance claim, because obviously if you have a vacant piece of property, you're not. Having any insurance claims about it. So it would just be a matter of um taking a look at. Priorization factors that we can have to kind of, for lack of a better term, rank properties against each other and kind of. See where you see where you should hit first and then uh the funding's a big piece as well. Because with the um traditional buyout program of structures, there's a federal grant funding available for that sort of thing. And there's a decent amount of federal grant funding, which is what we used in the past. That's why the city share has been so little to spend. We've spent, the projects have been more than four million dollars with the city's share or investment has has been about four million dollars. So at that point, there's less grant funding available to do those kind of open space preservation projects and things like that. So it would have to be mainly the city funding that program.
But Ben, to confirm that there there are some grant funding programs though that the city could look into.
There are, yeah, but they're not as robust as as the um kind of structured look removal grants that that FEMA has. Because at that point, we'd be looking at at more environmental grants and not really FEMA grants, because most of the FEMA grants are structured around getting structures out of the floodplain.
Right, thank you.
Well, I would definitely be in favor of seeing um of combining this tech change with. At least the structure of the buyout program, I might give some comfort to individual property owners that are going to be impacted, that they understand. That a buyout program actually exists and not just that it might exist at some point in the future. And what it looks like and how their property might be prioritized. Um, and and to provide some certainty for them. Is that something we could add to the tech change?
Yeah, uh. I I can't answer that, but I was going to say without a further objection, I would like to hold this at the table uh until the next meeting. And so we can give Mr. Brown some time to respond to everything that we talked about. Commissioner O'Haver.
I'd like to just add one thing. Of course, Ms. Miller um covered all my points much more eloquently than I did, so thank you for filling in the gaps there for me. The only other one that I had though is I would like to see, Ben, if it makes sense, sort of the flood prone versus. Just the FEMA floodplain and kind of what those impacts would be as well, if that's something you feel like. That information could get back to us.
Oh, and I think from staff's standpoint. Restricting this to the FEMA floodplain area would probably be staff's recommendation at this point, based on the amount of. About um. Confusion with like the different areas and that sort of thing, and that would make it a lot easier to kind of move forward. So I mean. Unless you want anything more to talk about the flood prone soils, staff's kind of recommendation would be just to restrict this to to the FEMA floodplain area. And if you're all right with that, we can modify the text change as such.
So what I'm hearing is that there are a few outstanding issues that we'll come back with next meeting. Um, surrounding uh the framework for a buyout program, grandfathered and effective dates. Uh, I think, am I missing anything, Commissioners Miller? Uh, I think, am I missing anything, Commissioners Miller and O'Haver?
Well, vested rights and then um, I guess we just need to talk about whether they need to bring anything else back on the three quarter acre or one acre. Just those are sort of the points that are on the tables.
Okay, so we'll add uh, to those three points that I made, uh, vested rights and quarter acre.
Chairman, here um, uh, time is time for review of this text chain, would it's, would it, would expire on March thirteenth uh, for the planning commission's review?
Okay.
So um, your next meeting is not till March twentieth unless you wanted to schedule a special one. Um, planning commission meets obviously next week and March ninth would be the last meeting.
What, what about if we set a meeting for March second, two weeks from today? A special meeting of four? Would, would everybody be amenable to that?
Sure. Could we get an extension for this?
You could, you could also, your other option is to ask for an extension.
Okay, okay.
I know that we've asked for a lot of information from you guys and that so text change too.
How feasible is it to have that information back in two weeks? And then if not, then we can ask for an extension. Or we can still have that meeting and still ask for an extension.
I'd never depend on the ability to get uh, to get that back in two weeks.
Yes, the only thing that I would push back on about two weeks is that it's the same uh, day as uh, an afternoon and evening city council meeting. So if it could be a different day besides that.
Also, I know the public's interested in looking at these and adding comments too, so um, maybe pushing it out a little. Some of the co- public comments, we're asking for additional time during, since it's very meaty work.
Okay, let's form, let's just formally ask for a time extension and then we'll just pick this one at our next March meeting. Can we do that?
Would you like to ask for uh, sixty days, forty-five?
Yeah, I think sixty days will be, will be fine. Any other comments? Okay, so we'll, we formally ask for sixty day time extension on this. We'll pick this back up at our March meeting. Um, and then hopefully that'll give Mr. Brown enough time to respond to our, our comments and requests. Um, if there are no other comments, I will adjourn today's meeting.
Really quickly, I just wanted to clarify, are we asking for the new text change to, to say up to seven point seven five acres or up to one acre? Based on the numbers that I'm supportive of up to one acre. And lot size, do the other commissioners have a agree with that?
Yeah, it was one acre.
Great.
Okay, so if there are no other comments, then meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.